All right, Mayor, whenever you're ready, I think we're good to go.
All right, we'll get started. All right, everybody, welcome to the regular meeting of Jersey Village State Council for January 18, 2021. Going to call this meeting to order, and Madam Secretary, announce the call is present.
Yes.
Call is present. Move into item B, invocation and pledge by former council member Mark Malloy.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Okay. So we're going to start with the pledge?
Start with the prayer, and then we go into the pledge. Yes, sir.
Will you bow your heads as I pray? Dear wise and loving Father, first let me say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of hell. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so from your boldness and gracious nature. I pray for our first responders. Keep them safe while they are performing their duties. I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Jersey Village, Texas. It is in your most blessed name, I pray. Amen. I pledge allegiance
Thank you, Mark. Move into item C, citizen comments. Citizens who have signed a card and wish to speak to city council will be heard at this time. In compliance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, unless the subject matter of the comment is on the agenda, the city staff and city council members are prevented from discussing the subject and may respond only with statements of factual information or existing policy. Citizens are limited to five minutes for their comments to council. I'm going to start with Mr. Mark Malloy.
Okay, my name is Mark Malloy. I live at 7803 Hamilton Circle, past city council member of the city of Jersey Village, Texas. Citizens' comments for the 01-18-2021 City Council Meeting, please make my verbal comments and written documents given to the City Secretary a permanent record of this meeting. I am speaking and asking questions during the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meetings to ask questions about agenda item F2, which is to discuss the creation of a fire control prevention and medical service district and the appointment of the mayor, five city council members, and the city manager to serve as the temporary board of directors. The city government back in the year 1995 asked the Jersey Village citizens to approve and did approve the allocation of one half of a cent of sales tax collected by the city for what is called the Sales Tax for Property Tax Relief Fund. This fund is, in the year 2020, brought in $1,964,161. The city government is now wanting to take a half of the half percent from the property tax relief fund and use it for the Fire Control Prevention and Medical Services District, which, if in effect last year, would have been $982,080.50. The question I'm asking the city government tonight on this agenda item is, are you, the city government, going to give the Jersey Village taxpayers that have a state of Texas homestead exemption filed with the Harris County, their full state of Texas allowed 20% homestead exemption instead of the 14% homestead exemption you're giving them at this time? And are you going to give the disabled and 65-year-old and older Jersey Village citizens the additional $160,000 homestead exemption that the Harris County and city of Houston are giving their citizens instead of the $75,000 exemption that you're giving them currently? Are you, the Jersey Village City Government, going to state to the Jersey Village taxpayers that you will give the Jersey Village citizens this year the above-mentioned homestead property tax increases that I have come before the city government many, many times previously to ask that the Jersey Village City Government do for the Jersey Village citizens? If the Jersey Village City Government is asking the Jersey Village citizens to forego half of the half percent sales tax for property tax relief revenue, then I think it's only right that the Jersey Village City Government gives the Jersey Village taxpayers the increases of homestead exemptions I have been asking for for the Jersey Village communities. The city of Jersey Village, Texas City Government, per them, have stockpiled an estimated $17.5 million that they are now planning to spend on multimillion-dollar projects without the Jersey Village taxpayers being allowed to vote during a regular or held or special election to make the decision if they, the taxpayers, want the city government to spend the city revenue on the very expensive project. The question I'm asking the Jersey Village City Government at this council meeting is, why are you, the city government, now asking the Jersey Village taxpayers for their approval to take city revenue from the Sales Tax for Property Tax Relief Fund? Is there a law that requires the city government to ask the Jersey Village taxpayers for their approval on this specific government want? Over the 13 years that I've lived in the city of Jersey Village, Texas, I have heard the statement from council members, "The people elected me to make the decisions." I personally don't, and I also don't believe that other citizens of Jersey Village, Texas, want their city government to circumvent the right of the Jersey Village taxpayers to vote on an election ballot to make the decision to purchase an estimated 33.9 acres of land for an estimated $8.2 million located on the south side of US 290 or relocate and build a new city hall on the south side of US 290 for an estimated $8 million. I believe that the city government is only willing to allow the Jersey Village citizens to vote on multimillion-dollar projects and issues that the city government wants if they believe the overwhelming odds are the Jersey Village taxpayers will approve the city government's wants. And so anyway, that's what I had to say for tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Comments. Appreciate your prayer. Appreciate it. All right, the next person I have on my list is Michael Stenbridge.
Yes, I'm here. Michael Stenbridge, 15422 Jersey Drive. I was just... We flooded Tax Day, and I know y'all know that already. You've heard it a thousand times. We requested elevation and redo from y'all as well as other additional parties for about, going on five years in April. So that never took place. Then you, Councilman Singleton, you support the tiers three, which I know you're trying to help people with that, and it passed today with 57% by the residents, I will say, which is the truth. And for people that can afford that or have the market value to relocate, that's great. And I'm not being satirical. I'm happy, you know. But we can't afford that. There's some others that can't afford to relocate to a comparable area. I'm just going to be honest. My wife is in a split title with her grandmother who has chronic Alzheimer's. And we would have to leave, we would have to split it with her guardian, and that would give us not even enough money, maybe to move to a trailer park or an apartment or condo or something like that. We don't want to live in that environment. There will be excavations. There will be demolitions, excavation equipment possibly within feet of our bedrooms. We are in fear. There's work that's gone through, you know, thankfully for the people upstream, fellow JV flutters. E127 Wall Street Crawford improvements. And we're worried. I have asked some people, Mr. Bleece, I've asked Mayor Pro Tim Warren, if that would bring any additional water down our way, and they have confirmed to me already that it would not. But we still worry about it. Where is the water going to go? Is it going to go into the berm? There's probably more scientific, technical about that. So, and I'm worried about my neighbors who don't possess a high market value. Would they have to wait through the demolitions, through the excavators? Councilman Singleton told me, "You're wrong. It would not be bulldozers. It would be excavation equipment." Maybe they would have to wait. I don't know what they would do. I don't know if some people would just take the cash and then be out on the street. I'm not sure. You know, we are worried. We feel honestly backed into a corner a little bit. And, you know, there was a previous election. We voted for who we voted for, two votes, and we felt confident in that person because we agreed with his policy. There was another individual that ran, very formidable candidate, and people made a muck of something in his past, and I greatly disagree with that. And I told some friends that I disagree with that. And I wonder if, you know, it just disturbed me at the time, I will say. So I had to air some grievances here about things that I felt strongly about. And the tiers is great for those who can afford it. And also, you know, my wife and I were discussing, who's going to be on the tiers board? Are outside people, friends of friends, you know, who don't live on East Jersey going to be allowed to rule on it? What about if a person gets on the tiers board? Let's say they sell and they move to Keister or Ockill or some happy, happy street where it never floods or wall and improvements go through. Is that person going to get to remain on the board even after they leave and really have no interest in East Jersey? And I don't mean to say that negative. I'm sure some people would have an interest still, being former flutters, being former East Jersey Drive people. But we have some big questions about the tiers. It did go through today. And so we, we have some, and then we're heading, we're marching, don't let me forget, we're marching straight on into flood season. April is when Tax Day occurred. The work for E127 Wall Street berm is scheduled for March, or the predicament, the prediction is that it'll go through in March. It's out for bid now. We went to Representative Fletcher, we contacted Representative Fletcher's office twice and asked her for help with an elevation. She referred us off to Representative Rosenthal. He did meet with Mr. Bleece and was mayor, but I know the mayor had to work. He was out of state on work. And then Representative Rosenthal told us that, that they just said no because the city was going in a builder direction. So, you know, we've tried extensively on this. You know, we just don't see...
Hey, Mike, that's just five minutes.
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, sir. Next person I have...
I would like to note, just correct some misinformation, that the turd has not passed. It is not up for vote. It's not being heard at this meeting. The only correct fact is that the city has received over 57% of the residents on that street have petitioned the city to enact a turd. And so it will come up in a future meeting, but it's not enacted yet as it was passed.
Thank you, James. Next citizen I have to speak is Joe Hewitt.
Hi.
Hey, Joe.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, good evening, Mayor Andrew Mitchum, city council members, and city manager Austin Bleeze. My name is Joe Hewitt. My address is 15917 Lakeview Drive. I am here tonight to update you on behalf of Jersey Village Senior Outreach, JVSO, a 501(c)(3) nonprofit, all-volunteer organization that supports our members who are 55 years or better residing in the city of Jersey Village. I believe the last time I presented to council was right before the entire world shut down from COVID-19. Like many, the pandemic required JVSO to go immediately into problem-solving mode. It has been a challenge to maintain our mission of keeping our members connected, active, and supportive to promote their independence. From the start, we had to identify members who did not use technology or had limited exposure to technology. In addition, we were concerned with the negative aspects of isolation on mental health. I am very proud to say that JVSO volunteers stepped up and continue to step up in a big way. With 171 members, we developed, organized, and executed plans and programs to meet the needs of the many members with varying degrees of competencies. This included training members on the use of virtual platforms, moving all of our programs from in-person to online, providing educational presentations on topics such as mask-making, online grocery shopping, and prescription refills. Volunteers were calling and checking on members on a regular basis who did not use technology, and even offering drive-by dinners with almost 100 members participating. Not only did we thrive, we grew. We added more programs so that on any given week, there are approximately five different activities for members to attend. This includes programs like craft making, cooking classes, book clubs, film clubs, TED Talk discussions, yoga, coffee conversation in technology, outside presenters from the Better Business Bureau on scams, and even our local library. No in-person activities have been conducted, but our attendance on Zooms ranged from 10 to 13 members on a regular basis per session. We continue to provide limited in-home support during COVID following CDC guidelines. We even created a new website with a national platform called Helpful Village, which has both public and private pages. Our website expands our ability to effectively communicate with our members. If you'd like to see it for yourself, you can find it at jvso.org. So our latest challenge is now assisting our members in obtaining an appointment for the COVID vaccination. Our board member Carrie Lawrence emailed Michael McLendon, Director of Public Health in Harris County, at midnight on Friday. By Saturday morning, Harris County was requesting a list of all of our members needing vaccinations. This required incredible hustle from our volunteers to contact all of our members quickly in order to provide a list by the end of the day. On Sunday, an email from Harris County was sent to these members to obtain an appointment. Getting an appointment was not an easy task, but some of our members did get in. Essentially, the breakdown is as follows. We have 171 members. We found out that 40 people already had their shots. 96 members were wanting vaccinations. 18 members actually got an appointment, and we still have 78 members needing an appointment. Fortunately, we were given another opportunity today to submit our list for those remaining 78 members. Our volunteers are on standby to go into action if and when the Harris County email arrives to assist as many members as possible, knowing there are only a few precious minutes to get into the system. So as you can see, we have been very busy. JVSO would like to acknowledge our appreciation to the city of Jersey Village for your ongoing support, including last year's grant, that allows us to continue to meet these challenges that are set before us. And thank you.
Thank you, Joe. I'm almost brought to tears by, you know, I'm in your Facebook group, and I get to see how hard Carrie Lawrence is working, and your group is working on getting everybody signed up for vaccinations. And it's not too often I get to say that a civic group in Jersey Village has saved lives, but the actions that you have taken, the actions that your board has taken, the actions that your members have taken have absolutely undoubtedly saved lives. And I really, really appreciate your presence and your hard work. And if you need anybody here to help you or your members get on any list, please, please don't hesitate to let us know.
Thank you. We appreciate that.
Thank you, Joe. All right. Going to move on to item D, city manager's report. Austin, do you have any item on the manager's report you'd like to bring up?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Would like to recognize our January 2021 Employee of the Month, Sonia Smith. Sonia has been with the city for 15 years now. She's done tremendous work in each of the departments she's been in, first with the Finance Department, then Public Works, and now in the Police Department. She serves or manages the day-to-day operations of the Police Department in a professional manner. Her work product is impeccable, and she is always willing to take on extra tasks. She's an outstanding employee with a positive attitude towards her work and towards the staff as a whole. She's dedicated to helping the chief lieutenants in the entire department and whatever it needs to be done. She's a valuable member of the command staff, and they can always turn to her and count on her whenever they need help. So we just want to thank Sonia and congratulate her on being the January 2021 Employee of the Month.
Well deserved. Thank you very much. I appreciate your service. Is there any item on the manager's report the council would like to discuss? All right, we're going to move along to item E, consent agenda. Is there any item on the consent agenda that a council member would like to move to the regular agenda? Seeing none, looking for a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. That was Gary Robin Horse with the motion, and James Singleton with the second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Move along to the regular session. Item F1, Consider Ordinance Number 2021-02, ordering a general election to be held on May 1, 2021 for the purpose of electing a mayor and two council members for places two and three, and calling for a special election to be held on May 1, 2021 for the purpose of submitting to the voters propositions to amend the City of Jersey Village City Charter regarding eliminations of Section 1.08 and 1.09 related to the use of red light cameras, Section B, amending Section 201, relates the number selection and term of office for the city council, Section C, amending Section 2.12 related to the publication of ordinances, and D, amending Sections 2.03, 3.01, 3.03, 3.04, 4.09, 4.10, 5.01, 9.04, and 9.07 to reflect gender-neutral language. Section 3, providing for ballots, 4, designating a time and place for holding such elections, 5, providing appointment for election officials and their compensation, and 6, providing for notices, 7, providing for publication, 8, providing for runoff election if required, and 9, providing for separability, and 10, providing an effective date. Laura Cootie.
Yes, Mayor. This ordinance is going to call the general election for May 1. Of course, it's going to be for the mayor and council member two and council member number three. It also calls a special election for a charter amendment election. And the caption you read indicates those areas of the charter that are seeking amendment. The ordinance lays out the exact propositions that will appear on the ballot as well as if those propositions are approved, it explains how the charter will be amended. So this item is to approve ordinance 2021-02.
Thank you, Lori. Any questions from council members?
So Lori, to vote against this is to vote against having the election or what?
So, at this point, I believe, and Justin's on the line, I believe that the council can discuss the, I'm assuming you're talking about the charter amendment language. So you can discuss if you want to change that language up or eliminate some of those propositions. It's up to the council at this time, and then if you do change the ordinance somewhat, then the motion would need to reflect that so that we could go ahead and prepare those changes to the ordinance before it's signed by the mayor.
All right.
And Councilman Robin Horse is adjusting, and Lori is right. That's correct. We just have the only issue that we'd be facing on not approving it, if you were just to flat-out deny the ordinance tonight, is that we have a hard deadline of February 12 to approve, I mean, to call in any kind of election. And so if we were going to, you know, flat-out deny it or make major changes to anything there, then we need to get those things corrected so that we can have this before you for approval before February 12 so that we could call the election in May.
Right. And this was discussed last meeting, you know, what the language should be, what council was comfortable going forward with, and also that we discussed the election judges. And that seems to be all contained in this ordinance. Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I've got, I've got a question about Proposition B. I have issues with that. I'm certainly not in favor of it. But relative to that, if somebody resigns, runs for mayor and does not win, can they again run for the position in which they resigned from?
No, because when we talked about this, when they tender their resignation, we call an election that coincides with their mayor-oral election. And so that space would be filled in May. So if they lose that mayor seat, then they lose both seats.
Okay. So when they, so the terminology, special election, is just...
Okay. Should someone resign outside of that situation?
Right.
So also, I think to further your question, Greg, if I understand it, if they resign from, let's say they're in a position that, like number one, position one, which is not up for election this May, and if they resign that position to run for mayor now in May of 2021, then they lose, then they will not be council member number one, and they will not be mayor. However, the next time that council member number one comes up, they can run at the next election for something, as long as they're not term limited. Wouldn't that be correct, Justin?
Yes, that's correct. So it's, yeah, so I mean, the idea would be, if someone has, if you're going to go for a concurrent position, you know, like from councilman to mayor, you lose, you know, you lose the mayoral position, but there's still, in your scenario, there happened to be some time left to run or file for the other, the current, you know, council position. That wouldn't be done because Council Singleton's right. We would have already called the special election. It's like an automatic resignation when you file that mayoral position. But, and then Lori is also correct, that when the next time comes around, nothing prohibits you from coming back in, if you were the person that did that, from filing for, running for office again for whatever council position that you might have automatically, you know, resigned by doing the mayoral place.
So if I'm thinking correctly, essentially, you could have a new mayor and three new council people as a result of that election?
Yes.
A significant turnover.
I mean, that would be the case even if we didn't have this, because you would have...
You'd have three council.
Yeah, let's say you had this year, you got mayor, place two, and place three on the ballot.
Right.
Let's say someone from place one runs for mayor. Now, I guess the difference would be, I see what you're saying, Greg, is that person from place one, if they won mayor, they would be on council. If they didn't win, they would still be in place one. If, in the new scenario, if they didn't win, then they would be off council entirely. So yes, that technically would result in three new people, well, a new mayor and three new council members.
Right. Almost a complete turnover.
Why would you want to do that?
To give people the opportunity to vote for their representatives rather than having them appointed.
Well, yeah, but they had the opportunity to vote for their representative, but now you're denying them... they had the opportunity to vote for their representative, but now you're denying them the right to serve out the term that they were elected to.
Because. They're doing it themselves. Running for another position.
I can't hear y'all because you're talking over each other.
Go ahead, Bobby.
The, the, the denial of the, having their representative serve out their entire term is being made by that representative who is then running for another position.
You're forcing him to make that decision, Bobby. You're doing it, not that, not that person.
No, that person is under the rules that would be proposed here.
That's what I'm saying. Those rules are forcing it.
Yes.
You're taking the citizens' right to elect their representative to a full term away from them.
No, we're not doing any such thing.
That's a bit of a stretch because a representative could resign.
Well, then they should be able to serve out their term.
Well, there is the question that i- if they decide to go for another position and then fail to get that position, there is a question of why did they fail? And did the electorate's opinion of that person change over the course of that year? Maybe they don't want that person in that position anymore.
Well, that's a big assumption to make, considering they elected that person to the position in the first place. You're, they're denying them the mayor's position, not the councilman, uh, position.
I think it's important to take a historical look. And at least as long as I have been around Jersey Village and seen elections, how many times have we had someone on council run for mayor and lose? That doesn't happen. What happens is the person runs for mayor, creating a vacancy. And then that vacancy is appointed by the council instead of voted on by the people. And that is what many citizens are upset and would like to see changed, is they would like to vote for that person instead of having it appointed by the council.
Seems like it'd be much more honest to change it, change that part of it rather than do it the way we're doing it here.
Change it how?
Well, you would call for a special election then, just like you're, you're proposing.
But under state law, it would have to happen in November. It's just not feasible.
Would it have to happen for a special election?
I think you're filling a vacancy. Required unless the governor.
I'm hearing special election on both cases, so why is it different under one than it is under the other?
Because under what we're proposing, the vacancy creates the opportunity to call a special election. You can't call a special election without that vacancy.
So Bobby, timeout though, if, if a council member does win the election for mayor, creating that vacancy, Justin, we can then call a special election. It doesn't have to be in November, right?
Special elections, they happen, the whole point of what you're doing here, special elections happen, they don't, they're not, they're not on a uniform election dates. That's the whole point of them.
Yeah.
So, you know, generally municipal elections are in May. In rare cases, they happen in November, like this last, like this last year. But the idea would be if, if someone automatically withdraws and then does this according to what you're doing here, you'd call a special election to fill, fill the vacancy. And I mean, that, and that just happens when it is. The person sits in that, in the position until the, like you're, until the rules say here, until the canvas is done on that special election.
But to be clear, Justin, to be clear, let's say we did not change this, or let's say we did something different. Could we hold a special election, say in August, to fill the vacancy created by someone running for a different office?
What do you mean? Like according to the, to the vacancies here, is that you're talking about?
Let's say.
Or you're just talking about in general, calling a special election?
Well, let's say two years ago, had the charter allowed us to do so, when Andrew won mayor and increased, and, and place one was vacant. If the charter allowed us to do so, would state law allow us to call a special, special election to occur, say in July or August to fill place one?
Yeah, what, what we do then is we, you know, I, I think the answer is yes. And, you know, you just fill it to the time. But then your charters, you know, I'd have to go back and look and see how your charter interacts with the, the state election law rules. But generally, what your charter dictates goes for the election rules. In rare occasions, election rules from the state trump your charter, but most of the time it's your charter, charter rules.
Can we double check on that? Because I think that, for example, didn't, the city of Houston ran into a problem where they had to ask the governor to have a special election on a non-uniformed date. If I remember correctly, holding an election outside of a uniformed date is pretty tricky at best.
Bobby, are you talking about place B? What, or place B in the city of Houston for, in this past year, 2020?
I believe there, it may have been affected by the fact, I'm sorry, not city of Houston. Harris County for the bond election, the flood bond. They had to ask for permission to have the election.
Well, that's, that's where the issue would be. It's not, when you talk about places on, places on council, for, talking about municipal issues, places on council, your charter will rule when it comes to vacancies. So that's what, that's what I'm saying. And your charter election committee did this. And so, I mean, we would call election, call election based on what your charter says. And only in the case where there, there might, there might be some issue where state law interferes with that. But, but the state law of calling special election for your own council will defer to your charter.
So Section 2.03 of the charter addresses vacancies. And it talks about if a vacancy occurs within 120 days of a regular election, such vacancy shall be filled by appointment of council. And then a council position filled by appointment shall be filled by election at the next city general election for the remaining year of the unexpired term.
So to resolve the conflict here, the disagreement, could we instead change the language to authorize a special election to occur after the May uniform date to fill the vacancy?
Yeah, you could change that 2.03 that she just mentioned and just remove completely the option to appoint by council and require an election.
Well.
Or that, or just make it part of the exception that's written into 2.01.
Yeah, or you just, yeah, you replace, replace the exception with, instead of appointment, calling a special election within however many days state law would require.
We need guidance, Justin.
Yeah, well, I mean, this, so, so i- if you're wanting to change this portion of the, of the ordinance, then what we'll do is remove this portion about the, about the charter, and then we'll bring that portion back to you.
We can probably, since we're having a meeting on February 8th, we could understand what the council wants so that we can bring the whole item back on the 8th. Is what I recommend doing.
I want to make sure that we all agree though, because we've already had this discussion.
I kind of want to get a sense of.
We didn't agree the first time. The, my, so I'm going to go back to my original question. If you amend this the way you're talking about, so the person that, that ran for mayor and lost would vacate his position after the special election, but under the new scenario that you're talking about, can he then run for the seat on which he resigned from? If you're calling a special election, it sounds like you can.
No. So what would happen is, think about it, let's think about it in the current situation. Let's say James Singleton, who is council member one, wants to run for mayor. He currently has a whole nother year left in his term after May. So he, if he signs up for the mayor position, he resigns council member number one. And then automatically, what will happen, the way this, this amendment is written, is it makes it available for somebody else to get on the May 2021 election to run for council member place one, the unexpired term.
Right, I understand that, but what, what we're talking about is calling a special election different than what, am I missing, am I missing something?
So, so what I'm suggesting.
What we're talking about is, is taking out the language to force the person to resign. And if that person wins the mayor's position, then a special election would be called to fill the, the position instead of having council appointed.
Well, yeah, and then what, what James suggested is you would have to make amendments to 2.03 because it, it addresses how the vacancies are handled.
Yeah, that's what we want to do is get the language so that we're allowed to do that. I think that solves the problem.
But the, the, one, one, one issue that you guys are having though is you're saying that if he wins the mayoral seat, that's when the special election is called, and that's, that's not how this is reading.
Correct.
Right, Justin. It's how we want it to read.
Well, I'm just throwing that out as an alternative. I, I think the problem we're running into, and if you, if you indulge me for a moment, if I'm hearing the opposition to this proposal as written correctly, it is that it punishes someone who decides in a, let's say they're elected in an even numbered year, they decide to run for mayor in an odd numbered year. It punishes them by essentially forcing them to vacate their seat. And they do not have an opportunity to continue service on council for another year when they could then run for a seat again.
I don't agree with that.
As an alternative, as an alternative, what I'm suggesting is that instead of forcing that resignation, we then, only if that person wins the mayoral seat, uh, then call a special election for several months down the line and to elect someone instead of the status quo, which is to have council appoint them.
I would like that, the wording there, I'm objecting to your wording, Bobby. You seem to be focused on the candidate when the whole purpose of this is to give the citizens the right to elect their person. And they've already elected one person and you're taking the right of that person to serve out their term should they lose the mayor's election. And that affects the citizens. It's the citizens I'm concerned about, not the candidate.
How so? His focus seems to be very solidly on the public and giving them a voice.
And he's proposing, he's proposing an election.
How, how is proposing an election focusing on the candidate, not the public?
So are you?
Putting the reasoning focusing on the candidate instead of the citizens as his reason for holding the election.
But in his proposition, or in his proposal, we remove the requirement for forced resignation. If they win the position of mayor, then they have to, that we have to fill the spot. And he's suggesting that we remove our ability to appoint someone and require that future councils call for a special election, giving the people a voice instead of just appointing someone.
I'm not, I am not objecting to that part of it. I, I just don't want to have to go through this discussion again because we're only focusing on a candidate.
I think if we focus on policy rather than who's concerned about who, then we can get through this.
And yeah.
I think we're all focusing on the citizenry. Currently, it's the citizenry who's not able to pick the successor of a seat that's vacated because someone runs for and wins the mayoral seat.
Greg, Greg has something to say. Go ahead, Greg.
I, I, I'm okay. That is a, that is a, an amicable compromise to say that the person does not have to resign. And if he loses, he retains his seat. But if he wins, then it goes to a special election. I'm fine with that. And, and I think that's a fair compromise.
That's, yeah, I think that's, that's what Bobby was suggesting. And I think, I think that, that what we really need, what we're, I think was really the, the, the contentious part is there has been times, and there, there's people on this, myself included, who were appointed to council. And it's better if, if we have the ability to change our charter in order to call a special election if there is a vacancy, uh, so the citizens can decide, then I think that's probably the best, the best solution.
I think that's a very, that's a very fair process. It accomplishes everything we want to accomplish.
Are you understanding it, Lori?
Yeah, but Justin, I need to ask, um, it's been a while since I looked at state law on filling vacancies. I, 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 I'm not sure what state law says about that. And so what we're saying here is it's okay, we would just change it in our charter and that's what would go. Is that correct, Justin?
Well, that's what I'm saying. Like whatever suggestions you guys want to do, we're, we're going to run it by the state election law first. I don't have that, that whole list in front of me right now. So, but what it sounds like, from what I'm hearing from everybody, is that on 2.0, what is it, 2.01C, the language there, and this may not be verbatim, but essentially what you're wanting to do is take out, when somebody applies for the place, that automatic resignation goes away. The resignation happens essentially if they win whatever seat they're going for. And that's where special election gets called. And that's going to trigger then on your 2.03 vacancies. You know, that, they say vacancies on council shall be filled by vote of the council. We're going to say by a special election.
Correct, yeah.
And then, and then, and then so from that, we're, the thing that we need to work out now is just the timing issues. And that's what I'm saying. So it depends on the timing of when you call these things and what the person's, how much time the person has left in office and all that. So, I mean, that, that's fine to make suggestions to change it. We just got to make sure, like Lori said, that we're going to, we're not running afoul of any kind of timing that the Secretary of State has in their elections.
I, I do think.
There's one other thing that we want to make sure that we're saying too. We're only talking about these vacancies that are caused by running for this other office. And we want to make sure that we don't change the ability for council to appoint in a vacancy if a person dies or something of that nature.
Right.
That's what I wanted to get clarification on because
Okay.
it may be an easier way. I, I think it's rare enough, and you know, maybe I'm, maybe I'm shooting myself in the foot by saying that, knock on wood. But it's rare enough that it only really so far has happened, at least for a number of years, in instances where someone runs for mayor. But maybe a cleaner way to do it is simply to eliminate the, um, that last portion of Proposition B entirely, the, the subpart C, just eliminate that outright and instead replace the vacancy provision, the Section 2.03, with a provision to require an election. I think there's actually already language there regarding if there are two or more vacancies. I'm, I'm trying to look at the language now.
Mm-hmm.
We may just.
I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, maybe we could just truncate that, uh, because it says, if two or more vacancies or one or more vacancies together with one appointee exists at the same time, a special election shall be called to fill said vacancies and replace said appointee. Except however, if it occurs within 120 days of a regular election, they'll be filled by the vote of council. We may, that's a little confusing too. But I think maybe somewhere in there, there's a simpler way to just roll it all together. But I think that would require us to, to decide, and I, I, I'm kind of two minds about this, to decide whether or not we want to move completely away from an appointment system for filling vacancies and to move entirely towards an election system.
So what, one of the, the way you, you said it, Bobby, and I misconstrued the first time. The second time is within 120 days, it will be filled by council. So if it was 121 days, it would go to special election?
So I'm looking at the charter as it exists right now. 2.03 currently says, so ordinarily, if there's only one vacancy, we would fill it. If there is either two vacancies or if there's an appointee serving and another vacancy occurs, then in that case, a special election must be called unless the second vacancy or the vacancies occur within 120 days of a regular election. Now, I don't know why that's there because I would think if you have, if it's only 120 days to the next election, well, then you just put it on, you, you could call a special election for the May date. I don't know.
I, I think that, one thing I want to point out to make sure everybody understands, the person that if wins mayor, that resigned or that was no longer, let's say it's James. He runs for mayor. He wins. His position is now vacant. Regardless of when you have that election, whether you make somebody sign up for that May election like it's currently written, this amendment, or you wait until November, that person that has to run and signs up is only running for an unexpired term. So in James's instance, he's, his position is up for reelection in 2022. So if, and I, and I don't know the timetable, it's 74, 78 days you have to call for an election. That's the deadline. So it, it may be that the November election is too late anyway. I'm not sure. But let's say it's not. They run in November. Then that person, if he wants to run again, he got to turn around and run again the next May in 2022. Just so you all understand what you're talking about in terms of these timetables and 120 days and whatnot.
Lori, can you, can you call a special election as a contingency? So in case we need it, we've already called it, or do you actually have to wait till, till the event takes place?
I think.
Question. My suggestion is just to eliminate B, Proposition B.
I'm on the right side here. It, you know, it, 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 it really does get quite. It, you know, it, 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 it really does get quite convoluted because if somebody, for example, James ran for mayor, you know, and, and, and didn't win, then uh, you're talking or you, you're just talking about, or did, did win, then that, then the per, then we have to hold a special election for someone to fill his seat for an unexpired term. Then that person has to run again at the following May. And you're just kind of, it's just a lot of elections, a lot of running, a lot of, you know, there's gonna, it's, it's almost like we're kind of picking what's the most inconvenient for the person choosing to, to run for mayor. And you know, that's a decision that I had to make myself and you know, it, it's ultimately comes down to the citizens of if I wasn't suited to run for mayor, then somebody either would have challenged me or I, or I would have had to campaign and, and lose or, or not. I, I think the system we have right now seems to be, I mean, maybe not, you know, as we're looking at it, it, it may become maybe the simplest solution. So maybe we get rid of B, but I think the real, I think, I think what is at heart in everyone speaking is they want the citizens to have, they want the voters to have the say in who's on their council. But we're sort of have our, uh, restrictions based on state law when we can hold elections. Uh, when we have to file for elections, when people have to file to run for elections and it just gets so close together that we're maybe creating a headache that we want to, that we, that we don't really want.
The, the other, the other part is that you're only talking about running for another municipal position, which is only mayor. So if you're on council and you run for school board or you run for a state rep, you do not have to resign. Uh, if you, if you run for state rep and you win, obviously you would resign and council would appoint. Under our current scenario, council would appoint. So we're, we're kind of narrowly focusing on one election. There are, you could run for county commissioner, you could run for state rep, you could run for a school board. You can run for anything else except mayor. If you run for mayor, you got to resign. That, I, I think we're, we're really parsing this up into, um, we're, we're, I, I, I think that, I think the best option is to leave it the way it is. Cause we can run through a thousand scenarios.
I agree.
So I've, uh, as y'all been talking, I've been thinking about this and Bobby's suggestion and, and just any adjustment we make to section 2.03. We haven't talked about this section. I'm reading through it. There are several different scenarios addressed within this paragraph. And I'm fairly concerned about hastily suggesting changes to it. The charter commit, committee took a lot of thought and effort into it. We've talked about it in order for us to meet a February deadline of calling for an election, adjusting this paragraph. There's a lot of analysis that would have to be done. I'm, I'm afraid we might be rushing into that decision. Um, Justin, I have a question though. Currently 203 says vacancies on council rising from any cause shall be filled by a vote of the council. Can that be changed to may be filled by a vote of the council? And it would allow the council at that time to fill it on a vote or call a special election?
I mean, so, so initial answer would be, yeah, you can make that suggestion, but the same, the same answer applies and we'll take that and then just to make sure that we're not doing anything with the timeline. You know, that the secret state has out for this and then see where your charter would trump the, the election, proposed election calendars, and then where those would, you know, trump your, trump your charter. Cause each, each one of those, like some, someone just said, I think maybe you just said it, that every single scenario here is, is you got to filter every single one of them through the election, election calendar. And sometimes to my, to my opinion, most of the time, election challenge, election calendar will defer to your charter. But there's some, especially this kind of scenarios that that's where election law, the election calendar will trump your charter because it requires certain deadlines. And so, yeah, I mean, I think the answer first of all is yes, we could change that shall to May. And then, you know, we'd have to account for all the, all the different scenarios that what, what happened if that changes other things within your charter. But yeah, but what you just said though, is that we're going to, we're going to do that before February 12th. To make sure that the council is on board with approving that specific change and the, and the instances that, that would follow from that particular change.
Guys, I'm really worried.
It, 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 yeah. If, if council wishes to change that, I mean, that's like I said, I'm fine with any changes you want to make. But we're just going to have to, Lori and I specifically are going to go through the election law calendar and find out which, which changes affect are, are free to make inside your charter. And then, and then if so, then is your charter backed up and has it, you know, is it built up to absorb whatever changes you're about to make? Or are those things that we can't even make because of the election law calendar? Hope, if that makes sense.
I, I'm really worried about making a sudden change to this chapter without giving it due research. And do the times that we have, there's a lot of scenarios that can be addressed here with like y'all said, death and certain things. And so the problem we're trying to fix is one small scenario. I would suggest that we adjust Bobby's plan just a little bit more. Remove required resignation from the prop B. Keep the rest of it, remove the required resignation and instead of 2.03 saying shall be filled, let's change the language so that council can choose to fill it or call a special election. May be filled by a vote of the council. And I know for sure that my stance, I, I, this has become such an issue in Jersey Village that if in May, someone's voted in to be mayor, now we have an appointment that we would typically do in June. I don't have any problem calling another election for that open spot. It's a vacancy, so it's a special election. So it's going to be in August, September timeframe. I'd vote for that instead of appointing somebody. It's been made very clear by a lot of people that's that's what they want to see. But I'm afraid of the unknown unknowns.
Well, let's, I think I'm going to back up a little bit. The charter review committee met. I don't know how many meetings they had. They had the advice of an attorney. This is what they proposed. So part of what they should have done is, is vetted this the same way we're talking about it now. Uh, so i- in my opinion, uh, as we start monkeying around and looking at changing, it's kind of, um, we're kind of bastardizing their recommendation. So I think, I think we either need to approve it as written or disapprove it. Um, if, if it's a charter review, next time around, they, maybe they need to go through those exercises. The other part, James, I don't, I, I like the way you're thinking on May, putting May in there. But then you're creating more ambiguity. What might, may not, you know, how are we going to decide that? It's a vote of council. So it, it, I think we, I, I, I think these things need to be very precise, very exact. Not subject to interpretation. This is what happens, period. And if we have a vacancy on council before the unexpired term, council appoints it, period. Now, what we're, what we're doing is saying, well, if they run for mayor, then they have to be elected. If they run for county commissioner, then we appoint. If they run for school board, we appoint. We're creating multiple scenarios. We're over complicating a very simple, uh, resolution. Keep it to this.
The other problem with the May word is what if council can't decide if they may, or they, you know, and they start, like that, that position doesn't get filled. So it's like
Decide to do nothing.
But you wouldn't have a split, you couldn't have a split vote though. Cause you have
Well, that's true.
Somebody would not have to be at the meeting for that.
But what if they decided to do nothing like, like somebody suggested?
I'm sorry, what, what May also does, and, and Greg alludes to this, is it allows for inconsistency of handling even the same scenario. Um, we've been really good at following precedent as far as when I've been on council. But, uh, you know, position one becomes vacant again. And then position, you know, four becomes vacant. How do we, how do we handle those? Right? If we do one, one way and one the other, that may show favoritism, may show wisdom that we did it differently. But, uh, if we abide by a set policy, I, I like the option, but, uh,
And really, you know, our charter does also, uh, you know, you have, the citizens have the ability to recall. So, you know, if, if, you know, overriding everything, if there was an appointment made to council, that was just not, you know, what the citizens really wanted, there is the option of recall. So I, I think there is, there is a panic button option of, but you know, looking, listening to everybody, I, I think the wisest decision and when I see the most heads nodding is, was take out proposition B for, for, for what we have right now. And, uh, that seems to be what, what.
To be clear, when I'm, when I was nodding my head, I was nodding my head regarding the not continuing to tinker with it. Just up or down on whether to keep B as is or get rid of it entirely. I do agree that I think at this point, that's the smarter route. Um, if we take it out entirely, we can deal with it at a later time after we've got more time to, to really look at it. But I do kind of want to get everyone's, I, I mean, I, I think at least for some people here, their position on B as it stands is pretty clear, but I want to make sure that we're all on the record. I mean, I support keeping B in as is in the, uh, in the ordinance.
Could I make a motion?
So wait, 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 let me, Justin here, just Justin here, let me make sure we're clear on this. And whenever the motion comes, let's not make it, let's not make it remove proposition B entirely because there's a couple, there are a couple of the changes are happening.
Yes.
Some are, uh, you know, gender neutral language is occurring there. And then you've also adjusted or suggesting to adjust popular vote versus majority vote. And that's as exist and well, in A and then B, you, you're also creating a subsection B, just dividing those two up. So what I would do is if, if you're going to do something and, and, you know, remove the portion that's, that's causing the issue. On proposition B, I would just say that the motion would be that you remove proposed subsection C of 2.01. Does that, does that make sense?
Hold up, where did the not word come in?
In B. I, I would actually say if we were going to remove, I would remove both, if we're, if we're going to not take forward the, the issues having to do with resignation and all of that. I would take out the changes both to B and C. I, I would have a problem proposing that we should just loosen up the term limits entirely, uh, without some balance.
I don't have a problem with that.
So you're, you're talking about taking out, approving the ordinance, uh, but, but removing proposition B, section B and C.
Correct.
Okay. So what, what exactly does B say? Because 2.01 is what we're talking about. And, and I think some of that language, it says, no person shall serve more than three consecutive terms of mayor. That's not in B, is it?
It is now in the proposed, and that's what I was saying. It's, it's, it's right now is contingent on creating three provisions out of your 2.01, existing 2.01 only has one, essentially one provision. It's like two, if I remember right, it's like two, the way it's drafted now, it's two paragraphs. But they're not labeled A and B. But I think that the, as proposed to the council, it put, it added a third paragraph, but then labeled each paragraph with an A, B and C. And so it, I mean, I, I think that what we would need to do is
I think what we're wanting, what the council is saying is to leave it exactly like it is in the charter right now, except for the changes in the first paragraph, which changes the popular vote and changes the whatever that other, uh, they hit the gender neutral.
Okay.
Right.
Is that correct?
That's the clearest way to do it. Yes, that's right. That's correct.
Okay. So I think I got what we're doing. So that's the consensus of council and you all want to come back with this on, on?
No, 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 that's not the consensus. I think Justin was asking that before Greg has made his motion, that we, that we get some clarity on instead of just saying proposition B gets removed entirely, what portions get removed?
I'm all for removing C, but I, I don't quite understand why we would take B out also.
The reason, at least my thinking on it is that the, the C was kind of put in there to provide a little bit of balance on the term limit issue. In terms of, well, I mean, to me, B and C kind of went together. But I just, I, I don't know. I, I that's fine. We can just, let's just, I, we'll just make it C. I, 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 if I'm the only one that has a, that kind of sees the two as paired together, probably on me. So
I don't really see them together. I have a little heartburn of not moving forward with it. I agree. It's maybe not the best, um, solution. I'm just a little bit frustrated that, yeah, the charter committee recommended it, nor not moving forward with it, but.
Well, this is fun. Um, with the consensus here on how to move forward with, I've now had basically four different recommendations.
Well, let's, let's start making motions and see what passes.
All right. Um,
I think your most agreeable is the, I'm not going to make the motion because vote against it, but it's just to remove, it's prove everything except for prop B subsection C removed.
Well, just out of curiosity, before we make a motion, how many here would pass this ordinance as written right now? I would. Am I the only one?
Jury meeting.
You got a half a vote.
I see some very iffy raising of hands.
You got a half votes Bobby.
Here's, here, here's where I come from. I, I think this has been approved by the charter committee. Right? And they spent a lot of time on it and it's been up to council. And when they presented it to us and we had a chance to Q and A, it's been up to council, uh, I believe at least one other meeting. And we've had a chance for other discussion and now it's up here now. I mean, and I recall one of the last times we heard was it's, you know, let's let the voters decide on these items. Now, now that's not to say we're a rubber stamp for all committees that, that we appoint and, and provide. And so, so I have conflict, not everything that they come up with is perfect. Heck, not everything we decide is perfect. Um, but, but that's where, where I'd rather leave it to the voter on, on some of these things. Uh, that said, I, I, I have heartburn on part C. So I'd probably vote against the
I agree with what you're saying, but I have to go with Greg too. There are times, like you said, we shouldn't rubber stamp a committee and I don't think this is the most, the best solution to this problem. And this is one of the times where we need to look at, at changing it. I would prefer to change it over just throwing it out though.
But I think, I, I think kind of reiterate what, what I said earlier. This only affects one position, the mayor. Now, when we, when we talk about giving voters the choice and give to the voters and do this, well, well, you're saying, yes, give it to the voters, but only, only if that person runs for mayor. If he runs for state rep, then we're going to decide. If he runs for school board, then we're going to decide. So it kind of defeats your arguments. You're not giving it to the voters. You're only doing the one position, you, you're singling out a single position that the voters decide and all the other scenarios, council decides. The argument, it's not a good argument.
I have serious doubts that the charter review committee considered any of these arguments that we're presenting.
I would agree. And I, let, let's, uh, I, I, okay.
I, I, I think, look, I've sat back and listened to everybody. I think the, the wisest thing to do right now would be to make the motion. And somebody make a motion and, and to, to make the motion of passing it to as written, see what happens and then make the motion. And then if that fails, make a motion to, uh, to pass it without, uh, proposition B subsection C. That seems to be what I've gathered from this hour conversation on everything and from the past meetings.
I moved to approve, I moved to approve ordinance number 20, 2021 dash O2.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? And motion fails for lack of second.
Chickens.
Can't have those either Bobby.
No.
That's right. Yeah.
Um, all right. Looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2021 dash O2 eliminating proposition B subsection C. Proposition B subsection C.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussions on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor? At two. All those opposed? Three opposed, any abstentions? All right, motion fails. All right, well, it's fun. We're going to get back to, uh. Where do we go from here? It's never happened before.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I approve, or I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty one dash zero two. Um, with the amendment to the o- ordinance. In proposition B, eliminating the changes made to section two point oh one of the charter and. I- in the second paragraph and third paragraph. And for clarification, that's just to leave the first paragraph changes proposed in. Eliminating the second and third paragraph. Changes.
Leaving paragraph A, eliminating, eliminating B and C?
Yes.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions, motion carries.
That's how the sausage is made.
All right, that was, that was great.
That's why the saying, it's not always neat and clean.
Mayor and council, what we'll do then is, I mean, you prove, you prove that, but Lori, do you feel more comfortable with? Uh, how about this, instead of, we're talking about specific ballot language here, what do you feel comfortable with, Lori?
Lori, you're muted.
What I want to say is if I understand it is you guys just eliminated term limits.
No, the, 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 the elimination was the proposed changes from. Uh, subsection B and C of proposition B. So essentially it's going to be the, what, what this, what the wording that needs to change and, and the, and the proposed ballot language is that we're going to drop. So this, I hope not confuse everybody. So it's going to say subsection two point oh one, number selection term of office. We're not going to have any subsection A anymore because that, that's a new change. We're not going to have any subsection B anymore, but we are going to have is the his. And paragraph one is changed to A successors of his successor. Popular vote and three, and the three times in the, in the bottom of the paragraph is changed to majority vote. What was considered as in addition to not in the second paragraph. Is it going away? So it's now, it's going to say any portion of a term shall, serve shall count. Instead of shall not count and then subsection, proposed subsection C, that paragraph is gone. And so my question then is that's what council just voted to do. What are you more comfortable with Lori, changing it that way and we have the record of that decision? Or this council, do you want to, would you feel also counsel more comfortable with? This whole ordinance coming back to you with the changes included for final approval? Or are you co- are you comfortable with counsel with the, with the approving of it, passing of it like you just made?
I feel more.
Vote on it? So that's like a done.
Well, it, it's, it's, well, I mean, it's on, it's on the agenda and your action just then, I mean, could be counted as final. That's what I'm saying. Is it a final action from you guys? Or would you feel comfortable with this coming back for just a, just a, to be on another agenda than the. February, I think eighth, is that correct, Lori?
Right.
Right, so on the February eighth meeting, you're going to have a meeting then with other election issues. Would you feel more comfortable to make sure that the ba- the ballot language that you just amended, that's in this ordinance? Even though you just approved the changes and all that, and I, I think legally, it's, it's approved, it's done. But nothing prevents this thing from coming back to the, with the changes included. Just to make sure it's clear to the voters of what's going to be there because, because the, because the ballot language ahead of the, of what you just changed. That's going to change. So proposition B, the wording that is going to change because of what you just did. And again, everything's fine with what you did. Nothing's wrong, but it just would be maybe a clarity, a, 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 just. To bri- provide some clarity for the citizens of Jersey Village, this is what's going to be on your ballot, based on what you just did.
I, I see what you're saying, Justin. I, I think, I think that would probably be wise to bring it to the special session we're having on February, uh, eighth and. Because the, the, the ballot language does now conflict with what is actually going to cause the changes. So I think. Having more clarity, uh, on the ballot would save us a lot of heartburn, uh, based after what we just did, so.
So Justin, if we do that, do you need us to do anything now, uh, as far as?
No, 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 because I mean, so, so why, I'm, this time I'm going to take that action. As, as you did correctly, I mean, you, you did everything right. You approved. You know, approved this ordinance with the changes and so we can, so our decision going forward then is, all right, so we got to. Now we got to make ballot language reflects your decision. You know, we could do it based on the assumption that, that citizens are listening now or watching now, or we'll come back with the minutes. Or they'll, you know, they'll get the, the election notice and they'll see what's on there. Or we could do it this way where we can bring it before them again and you just have this item and you, you do, do a final approval. You, you approve an ordinance subject to the changes that were approved at the previous meeting and that's. A simple, it should be a simple, you know, one, one stop deal. You can explain at that time. Uh, but no- nothing's extra is needed now. You've done what you need to do and Lori and I can get the thing changed, but. But I think since we're talking about a ballot language with the charter, this might be something you want to take. They just have it before the citizens one more time for clarity.
Yeah.
So I'm clear. Um, this ordinance that I have on the agenda right now, Justin, you're going to change it. To say what a council just voted on and I'm going to get it signed by the mayor or I'm not going to get it signed by the mayor?
We, you, well, you're going to get that, you're, you. Okay, well, what we're going to do is, is you could, I mean, legally you could get the signed, the amended version. Signed by the mayor and that's fine. But then we're just going to bring it, I, I think what I'm, what I'm thinking is that we bring back the sign, the signed amended version before council again. And just affirm that's what it is. If there's any other changes that need to be happened, we'll do the same thing at that time.
So I put it next, on, on February the eighth, I put the same number art ordinance or I give it a new number?
No, no, you, you put the same one on there and you just put in the, we'll do a discussion and possible action on this, on approving this, this item. And if there's any subsequent changes need to happen at that time, then we can make them. My, uh, my guess is that no additional action will need to be taken because council unanimously approved these changes, if that makes sense.
Lori, Lori and Justin, why don't we take this, that, that, you know, the, that conversation behind the scenes?
Okay.
Let's move forward with the meeting. All right, move on to item number two, consider resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero four. Opposing the creation of the Jersey Village Fire Control Prevention and Emergency Medical Services, Medical Services District, the district. Pursuant to chapter three, three, three forty-four of the Texas Local Government Code. And, uh, establishing a temporary board of Jersey Village, uh, temporary board of directors, appointing city council, city manager. Of City of Jersey Village. Uh, let's see, it says Austin Bliss on it.
Aaron, councillors, thank you. Um, so we, we discussed the Fire Control Prevention District, um, I shortened the name. Uh, quite a bit over the last couple of months and tonight we have the resolution here. Um. If the council approves the resolution, temporary board would organize and elect a presiding officer. We would adopt a, a two-year budget. We would have all the public hearing on that and then, um, sorry, we would adopt a two-year plan. Hold a public hearing regarding a two-year budget and then adopt a budget, uh, and then order a confirmation election, which will go to the voters in, in May.
All right, um, here, let me pull this up. My packet here. All right. Does anybody have any questions, uh, for Austin about this topic? So this would be basically a, uh, a temporary formation of the board subject to. Our, our future discussions on, uh, sales tax allocation and, uh, voter approval of the board to continue existing, correct?
Correct.
All right, any questions?
Don't so much have a question. Um, I did want to say that, um. You know, um, Mr. Malloy brought up some questions regarding whether council was committed to. Uh, continuing to pursue, uh, property tax reductions. Uh, which I think is very relevant to this topic because we are talking about taking a half cent that. Uh, was originally allocated towards property tax reductions and moving it towards the fire department. Um, you know, I, I don't think, you know, I think by our actions, we've shown a commitment. Uh, in the last couple of years to reducing property taxes. We made. Uh, the first increase to the residential homestead exemption. Uh, in, what was it, fifteen years prior to that? Uh, we made the first changes to the, um. To the, the over sixty-five exemption, uh, since it was enacted, I think in two thousand nine. Um, you know, we, we've made some pretty good strides in that direction. We've reduced the property tax rate. Uh, and I mean, obviously there's, you know, next council. Might look very different, uh, after the May election. I mean, it, I guess it will to some degree. Um, but, uh, so there's no guarantees, but, um, you know. All I can say is, yeah, I'm, I, I've always been an advocate for continuing to reduce taxes where we can and to increase the homestead exemption and. Uh, the existence of a, of a, a half-cent sales tax dedicated to that. Uh, doesn't necessarily change that. It certainly didn't help for the amount of time that it was there. Um. On the other hand, I do think that it's important for us to, uh, ensure the future viability. Of one of the very key parts of what makes the city so special, which is our fire department and our EMS. Um, services. Uh, this ensures that that happens. You know, I can't ever foresee a day when a future council would decide to drastically cut. Uh, the budget of either our fire department or, or even our police department. But I think that by having a dedicated fund, it makes it very hard for anyone to decide to, to. Real, you know, reallocate those funds somewhere else. Uh, so. This really is more about a commitment to our fire department, the same commitment we made years ago to our police department. Um, and. Unfortunately, we only have, there's only so much sales tax that we have to work with and this is, this is the easiest way to do it. So I, I think it's an easy decision.
I agree.
I'd like to make a comment.
Go ahead, Gary.
Well, when you're talking about lowering taxes, I, I don't see anybody on council that would. Be against that. You know what I'm saying? It's, it's just. The popular thing to do, for one thing, it's, uh, but we're all citizens, we all pay taxes. We want them to be lower. That, that problem is that we have a responsibility to our community to provide services. So there's always this discussion or this debate between how much money. Is going to be spent on the services that the ci- the community wants. And of course, the community is made up of a, a lot of independent citizens and each one of them has a different opinion on what services are important. Are more important than other services. And, and obviously fire and, and police is a very, uh, popular service to have. But it's still the same debate. Recycling would be the one that would come to mind. And I think the community for, for the most part has decided that they want recycling. But I'm sure there's citizens out there that say, we don't need that service, we can do without it, if we can get lower taxes. So there's always this discussion. I am for lower taxes, but at the same time. It just makes sense to take care of the services that makes us the community that we are. If you want to read about a, a city that. Uh, decided to lower taxes and decided it was. Expedient to cut services in order to do so, Grafton, New Hampshire has a history. Of basically destroying itself by doing just that. Citizens move into this community to get, basically because of the services that this community offers. And it's obligatory that we raise the amount of money that's needed to pay for those services. And that's all I got to say.
I, um, when Mr. Malloy talked, I, I thought about commenting, telling him, you know, that. This, at this present time, this council is not the people to discuss homestead exemption with. It would be the people filing for positions right now. And, um, I look forward to debating in May with those newly elected officials. Where we're going to find the two hundred and forty thousand that's necessary to raise the homestead exemption to twenty percent. So I look forward to trying to find that money.
Yeah, and just since I've been on council, it's, you know, we've, we have been a tax lowering council. We're also a unique community in the fact that we're, we are, we, we have seen our sales tax increase. And, and, and we are, a- a- as Gary said, we all pay taxes. We are all citizens. We all get that property tax bill. Uh, we, i- it has to come from somewhere. We are citizens, we are taxpayers as well. We're a unique community in the fact that we can use the sales tax increases to allocate this money towards our priorities. There are eight thousand people in our city and I think you can probably find eight thousand different combinations of priorities among those eight thousand people. Uh, everything, everyone's priorities are different, but I would say it's, 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 uh. Pretty apparent that our police and our fire emergency services, our infrastructure. Um, are, are always ranked quite high. Um, and that's very much why people move here. It's why I stay here. Um, it's why I plan on retiring here. Um, and so I think making that commit, that commitment, uh, is great, but then we can also, uh, you know, as, as a public comment was, was made. Um, do we want to raise that, that homestead exemption up to, to, to twenty percent? This isn't the council to ask that question to, definitely, uh, something that people need to campaign on and answer that question. Uh, before people go to the ballot box in, in May. Uh, but as this, uh, agenda item reads, uh, we are looking to, uh. Establish the board temporarily, uh, and, uh, appoint the city manager and, and council to a temporary board. Uh, so that it can exist for now and, uh, that we can, uh, have something on the ballot, uh, in May to, uh. To, uh, make something go forward, uh. Permanently. Uh, so I'm looking for a motion on that topic.
I move to accept resolution number twenty twenty one dash O four.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Move on to item three, uh, conduct public hearing, giving all interested parties the right to appear and be heard on the city council's desire. To request that the crime control prevention district board order a referendum. On the continuation of the district and sales tax for a period of five years. I'm going to go into the public hearing, uh. And I'll call the order of the public hearing, uh, on the city council's desire to request that the crime control prevention. District board order a referendum on the, on the continuation of the district and sales tax for a period of five years. Everyone desiring to speak at this hearing should complete a public hearing comment card and present to the city secretary. The purpose of today's hearing is to give all interested parties the right to appear and be heard concerning the council's desire to request that the crime control prevention district board. Order a referendum on the continuation of the district and sales tax for a period of five years. Uh, Lori, do you have any buttons signed up to speak for this topic?
No, sir.
All right, there being no one desiring to speak, I now close this public hearing on city council's desire to request for the crime control prevention district. Board order referendum on the continuation of the district and, uh, sales tax for a period of five years. All right, moves us to, uh, item number four, uh. Consider resolution number twenty twenty one dash zero five requesting a referendum on the continuation of the Jersey Village Crime Control Prevention District. Austin?
Mayors and, and mayor and councillors, um. This item here would be to bring the CCPD fee, CCPD, um, sales tax in line to what the. Fire control one would be, so that moving forward, they would roll at the same time. This, this allows for all of the sales tax items being the one question. On the, on the May ballot.
All right. Any questions for Austin?
Yeah, a question, um, Austin, we're doing five years, wh- why five and not ten? Or what's the?
So Austin, this is Justin here. So, so councilman, it's because the, the idea, but Austin. And I think council intended is that we'd have an alignment of the dates of, um. Of election for the continuance of both the fire prevention district is proposed to be created and the CCPD. And the way, the way that it's status now, that they'd be off by a few years. But at any time you can call a, like what, what the resolution just did is that you can request that a continuous referendum be called. And you can do it for increments of five, ten, fifteen. And so the, if the ce- if the fire prevention district is created, it'll be for an initial term of five years. And so if you do a CCPD extension for five years, it'll align. it'll be for an initial term of five years. And so if you do a CCPD extension for five years, it'll align. If it's approved, does that make sense?
Yeah, it makes sense. So it was just an arbitrary decision to put the uh, the fire district at five?
No, the fire, I mean, i- i- initial creation is only five years for that particular district. After that, you could do a ten, you know, five, ten, fifteen extension, but to make them align, that's why we do this.
Right.
Essentially true up of, of the, of the election times.
Yeah, I, so yeah, I guess my question goes back to, it's a mandatory five initially, which.
Right.
Right, I understand now.
Um, so if I am reading this correctly, are we doing the CCPD for five and the FD is automatically five?
So that's, I think, I think the, the proposal would be that, you know, if, you know, assuming that the fire, fire prevention district is approved, it's approved au- automatically by statute, it's a five-year term for, for the district.
I, I read it again.
When that five, okay. And then, so the CCPD calling for the continuation would be just a true-up when that five years ends for the fire district. CCPD would also be up, so that way you could do those u- uniform moving forward.
Yep, I, I got it now. I, I misread it.
No problem.
All right. Any other questions? Discussion? See, looking for a motion?
I move to approve resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, gonna move into item number five, consider ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero three admitting the general fund budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-one in the amount not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars to increase from the general fund balance, the finance department salary and benefits line items in order to provide for the salary payout of a longtime employee that is retiring and to provide the necessary funds to uh, bring a new employee on board. Isabel?
Yes, sir. Um, uh, early this month, my senior account clerk announced that she was going to retire at the end of February or beginning of March. So being that she's been a longtime employee, she has um, a large balance of um, vacation and sick time in her, in her bank, so we need to pay that back. So we calculated that the amount that we have to pay her plus I was thinking to bring a new person and that, but I would like to have that person to have a an accounting degree with experience in financial accounting. So um, I was um, request respectfully requesting for that um, budget amendment.
Right. Any questions from council?
I, um, I'll let Greg go, because he may have the same question I was about to have.
Yeah, do you have a breakdown of, of where that fifty-five is allocated? You have one to the employee and one to the new position.
Uh, yes, I do have that breakdown. I have to look it up. But I, I believe for her position, um, for her, uh, it was like, maybe like twenty, maybe twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, I will have to.
I think the payout was about twenty-five thousand.
Yeah, twenty-five thousand. And then the other part is that the difference is uh, for, we wanted to bring a person with uh, a bachelor's degree, which obviously would make more than the person that um, we have now plus experiencing fund accounting and general um, governmental accounting, which is uh, so I want to kind of also train that person, which in a few years, when I decide to retire, that person can take it over.
You're, you're not allowed to leave us, Isabel.
And yeah, Isabel's not allowed to retire, but and to be clear, we're all more worried about the ongoing expense proposed here, not how much we're cutting a check to a former employee. We appreciate their service, we're not worried about that. It's that there's definitely gonna be some ongoing increase here.
Yeah, but the increase, uh, we're not going to, um, what we did is, and, and, and I don't know if, um, maybe some of you that have been here long, like maybe Greg. Uh, remember, I used to have an, an assistant finance director on here with us, and she went to work for another city. So what we did is, we looked at the salary of when she left, and we calculated it up to the level that she would have been now, she would have stayed with the city. So that's how we looked at it. So we're not look, uh, asking for a big, big, big salary. Of course, it's going to be higher than the person that I have, because the person that I have was a clerk. And the, uh, the position that I'm proposing is like an account manager, so that person not only would be doing the duties that, that this account clerk was doing, but she would be doing more, like she would be doing more like of supervising, and I want to, I want that person to also learn uh, things that I do. So in a few ye- in, 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 maybe in twenty years, when I decide to retire. Uh, that person knows what I'm, you know, somebody knows what I'm doing, so they can take over.
So this position is going to take some of your responsibilities.
Well, I want to, uh, I want to, that person, I don't think I'm going to give away my responsibility. I want that person to learn my job. So, so we can, like, when I go on vacation, I don't have to take my computer and connect. That person can help me out, and y- you see stuff like that. Also, I'm the only, I'm the tax assessor and collector of the city. In order to do the calculations that I do, you require that I have, I, I have, I have a a, a license that I studied hard for it. I, I, it took me like three or four years to get that license. It's uh, so um, in order, in order for, for me to do that, the calculations that I do is against the law if I don't have that license. So what I was thinking is have that person come over and start it for that license. Eventually, in, in, in a few years, we'll have that, so we have a backup in the city.
All right, any more questions for Isabel?
Yeah, well, and this may be more for Austin. Um, you know, I know that it's always kind of a back and forth on how much um, you know, different organizations allow um, employees to bank sick time or vacation year after year. Um, Greg's question kind of helped clarify that, which is that, that, that it, there's a, a, a portion of that is going towards the, the new salary, but I was kind of curious, and the part of it is just kind of managing costs, but also kind of ensuring that employees are taking the time to sort of recharge their batteries. Um, to what degree do we allow employees to, to bank their uh, time off?
So vacation time, you have a hundred and sixty hours, that's the max you can have at your anniversary date, so it's a use it or lose it after that point.
Okay.
Um, under limited circumstances, I have the authority to extend that, but we want people to take time off and recharge. Um, the bigger one is the sick time payout that we offer. So that's um, uh, this person's been with the city for quite a, quite a few years.
Yeah, like over, over, like maybe thirteen years.
Yeah, and very healthy, so they haven't used their sick times.
Yeah, and, and you want to incentivize people to not take sick time unless necessary. Uh, so yeah, I, I, I get that policy. I just wanted to, well, kind of wanted to make sure, I, I wasn't sure if this was someone who had not taken vacation in, you know, three years and.
We have, we have to take vacations.
Good.
Vacations, yeah.
Okay. Just want to be sure people aren't burning out. Okay.
Isabel, if uh, I mean, this new position, this is all discussed with HR, the proper research on salary amount and everything was done?
Yes, sir, we did. Also, uh, we put that amount like, like kind of a large amount, because we look at the worst-case scenario. So we looked at the benefits with the, a person that will have a family. The, the person that is leaving, she, it was only her, so the benefits that we paid to her for health insurance is lower. But in this case, we look at, at the, the worst-case scenario, a person with a, a family and, and all that. So yes, we, we worked with uh, with HR on these numbers.
So Austin, we should only hire single people?
It's expensive, y'all.
Uh. Longest discussion over fifty-five grand. Now I gotta find two hundred and forty thousand plus fifty-five grand next year.
All right, any more uh, discussion on the topic? Seeing none, I'm looking for a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number twenty twenty-one dash zero three. Second.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Move on to item number six. Consider resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero six, authorizing the city manager to provide a letter of intent to purchase a new ambulance from Frazier Ambulance through Sterling McCall Ford, Mark Itz, police chief.
Mayor and council, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Um, to next year's budget, we will be replacing our reserve ambulance. Um, in order to get that going, to that potential ten-month to thirteen-month build, we need to get in line. In doing so, uh, we need to provide Frazier Ambulance and Sterling McCall Ford, who we plan on purchasing the ambulance through a letter of intent to purchase. So this uh, resolution here is just to allow Austin the opportunity to send them a letter saying that we intend to purchase an ambulance in the next budget year.
All right, thank you, chief. Uh, any questions for chief?
Yeah, they, we typically, on purchase of equipment, we go through, what is it, the uh, Galveston, Houston area?
Uh, like the buy board?
Consortium.
Yes, sir. It's through one of those uh, participating buying agencies. I'm not sure if, I think it was maybe uh, HDAC on this one.
So basically, a trade-in is considered in this?
It is. There's a twenty-seven thousand dollar trade-in on the current ambulance, which checking with the fleet manager, Jose uh, Delagarsa, it's right in line with government auction pricing.
Good.
Outstanding.
Everyone's favorite apparatus in the fire station.
Chief, I was just gonna ask, uh, I assume that the funds for this either are or are slated based on our current projections to be in the capital replacement fund uh, for this particular ambulance?
There is funding in the, the current replacement fund. Um, for this particular ambulance, I think we're just a little bit shy, but we have uh, additional sixty thousand still for the other ambulance, so we have like two hundred and sixty thousand in there right now for this.
Okay.
How was the decision made to go with Frazier?
The committee of volunteers and paid staff over the last several months have been meeting with different manufacturers, Frazier Ambulances, Wield Coach, uh, Road Rescue, several different manufacturers. Uh, the two that we ended up looking at was Wield Coach and Frazier. Frazier came back with the estimate at two hundred and eleven thousand, Wield Coach, two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Uh, we have not had many problems at all with Frazier. It's a local company. Uh, we just could not see spending another forty thousand dollars on a new ambulance just to try another manufacturer. So uh, the committee decided to go with Frazier, and that's why we're bringing that to y'all tonight.
Yeah, I'm not gonna argue against Frazier. I've liked him for a long time, so.
This may be inside baseball. Um, uh, Sterling McCall, I mean, is that just how Frazier does their outfitting, or how, okay?
Yeah, that's, that's who they contract with for uh, purchasing the chassis.
All right. Well, as I said earlier, I plan on living here a long time and retiring, so I want the new ambulance to pull up to my house any, anytime I call, so put, put that on the list.
This one will be gone by the time you're gonna need it.
Constantly new stuff. I want the newer, the newer, the newer.
All that brewery food.
Pulls up to the.
I think Greg, Greg might get views out of this one.
Oh, yeah, I'm, I'm very interested in this particular. And don't name it the Greg Holden Memorial.
No, no, just that, just the server room. All right. Uh, any more questions for the chief? If not, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll move to approve twenty twenty-one dash oh six.
Second.
Uh, motion and a second. Any more discussion on the topic? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moves us to item number seven, consider resolution number twenty twenty-one dash zero seven, approving a development agreement between the city of Jersey Village and Cesca Limited Partnership and Ronald B. Doan Jr. Austin?
Mayor and councillors, the uh, city's been approached by the owners um, for the prop- of this property at, for a development agreement for this property located at FM five twenty-nine at Jones Road, a map of which is later on in the, in the packet here. Uh, the owner is planning to build a seven-eleven convenience store with restaurant attached. Uh, they desire to have city water and sewer. As the city does not typically provide water and sewer services outside of the city limits, they're requesting to be annexed into the city. So the agreement here uh, tonight would allow for the property to be developed according to our building ordinances while the property is being annexed. The city would work with the property owner to deliver water and sewer um, while they're in that process of annexation. We would work towards this property being zoned as District F. District F has similar standards for building construction materials as District E Transition. The owners are also agreeing to the District D Transition signage requirements. Uh, they'll be, is, this will be the corner of the entrance in the building center. We felt strongly, staff feels strong, strongly that we need to make sure that that corridor matches as best as possible with the requirements listed in District E. There's also going to be enhanced landscaping along the west and north property boundaries. So we have the um, agreement in front of council tonight. We collect, corrected about two typos in there, and then we have another um, change, we're changing just the, the headline of uh, section L. It's, reads covenant, running with the land. And then in section J, um, for enhanced landscaping, the owner, it'll read, the owner agrees to provide enhanced landscaping along the north and west property boundaries. So everything that's, that's there. Um, staff feels this is a, a good, a good agreement. Uh, we've reviewed this extensively with the city attorney and the property owners and their development group. I believe they are on the call the way it looks. If the council would like to ask them any questions. We feel this is a win-win for all parties involved and uh, would recommend approval.
Thank you, Austin. Uh, any questions from council?
Yeah, Austin, I do have a question. Um, who, who, i- if, if services are not provided by the city, who would provide those services currently?
It'd be well and septic.
Well and septic. Okay. I- in, in the development agreement, is there an impact fee associated with those hookups, or are they extending the lines, or how are we getting services through that particular facility?
The impact fees would um, still apply, um, as it's, as with anybody hooking into the services. And we would work to extend, essentially extend the main um, to their property wherever would, that would need, and then at some point, we could continue that down.
Okay, so the, the extension, the extension is that city expense?
Right.
And, and, but that, but there's ancillary uses for that down the road.
Correct. Yep.
Am I misunderstanding something? Um, I had the impression that we were gonna change the boundaries of the city by doing an annexation here. Is that not true?
That's true.
Yeah, so what are the new ba- the proposed new boundaries?
So on the last page of your council, sorry, not the last page, the third to last page, page two twenty-five of your PDF file, the parcels that are listed, or they're in yellow, um, would now be a part of the city limit, so that black line would be shifted over to the right. Um, you'd have pieces of uh, on both sides of Jones Road now in the city limits.
So this zigzaggedy uh, boundary that we have, that goes to five twenty-nine, the south end of it, that borders five twenty-nine is now going to extend to Jones Road? And where that L shape or whatever, backwards L shape, the boot, the toe is going to extend to Jones Road? Or is it, we're gonna go from Charles to five twenty-nine along Jones Road?
No, not, not all the way to Charles. Um, it's just the properties there listed in yellow, so that the bottom part there along five twenty-nine would extend out um, into the yellow parcels.
Hey, Gary, you remember making a house fire over there about, man, it may have been four or five years ago? It was a psychic greeting house?
Uh.
I wanna say it was a water heater fire.
I have forgotten.
I made it.
Calls.
Mark called for, for the county and went out there with them. Um, that's, that's the property, and it's just that property that would be included into the city now.
Yeah, I saw the property this morning. I, I drove over there. Uh, I was just wondering why we would annex just that piece instead of annexing more. Uh, what, what's the benefit of limiting us, our, us to the, just that area over going all the way to Charles? going all the way to Charles with it and?
It's not a forceful taking. It's a, that property's coming to us saying, hey, we want to be annexed. We are going, we're voluntarily joining your city. And so we don't have authority right now to go annex all this other property. We can only take what they're saying, hey, we own this and we wanna be part of you.
And then at the same time, as soon as you annex those other properties, the city has to provide services to those properties as well. So you're talking about a hot, a much higher cost to properties that may not be as productive uh, as far as sales tax revenue and property tax revenue as this developer is, is planning going forward.
Exactly. You, so number one, like James mentioned, it's much easier when someone agrees to be annexed rather than going through the other way. And you, you do wanna make sure that you're able to cover the cost of providing all of those services. I, and it's not even just um, water, it's fire, it's uh, police, all of that. Uh, but from the sound of it, if they're building a, I didn't even know, I'd heard that there may be some seven elevens up in Dallas. I, they left uh, Houston like what, back in the eighties or early nineties? I didn't even know you were getting seven elevens back, so.
Circle K came back.
I'm just kinda jazzed about Slurpees being in the city, but uh.
Baby.
Yeah, um, you know, it's been a long time, but, but also, I mean, I'd like to think that if the, if the, if your, if Village Center was not going in, that this might not necessarily be uh, as, you know, I don't know if they would even be looking at that property or not. Um, you know, if it's a Austin, have they mentioned what kind of restaurant would be attached? I mean, I, I would imagine we're not talking about fine dining. We're probably talking fast food of some sort.
Right.
Okay. I mean.
So. I'm glad you've mentioned fire and police is gonna mention that as Austin talked about well and sewer or water and sewers being the extra costs. Um, a gas station actually attracts higher usage of fire and police than any normal business because when you're driving down the road and have an emergency in your car, or are you gonna stop? You're gonna stop at the gas station. And so we're actually going to see, because right now we don't have to deal with emergencies on five twenty nine. Well, now they're gonna pull into a gas station that's inside the city. And so anytime somebody calls and says, oh, I'm at the seven eleven at five twenty nine and Jones, the county's gonna go, that's great to hear. You're gonna get Jersey Village instead of us. Um, and so it'll be a negligible increase. It will be an increase um, because we're gonna be able to pull that Village Center look from the north down all the way to five twenty nine. I would definitely still be in favor of this. Um, I would be more hesitant if we didn't have Village Center going in because of that attraction to gas stations, gas stations for events and it would just increase much more than water and sewer.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I go up and down the street quite a bit, uh, five, five twenty nine quite a bit and there's a lot of businesses over there and they're very, very underserved when it comes to restaurants, quality gas stations. Um, you know, it's, it's definitely, we definitely see that crowd come up through Jones Road and go to Willie's and Whataburger and Chick-fil-A and, and uh, other establishments for, for lunch. And so drawing that down, drawing that, that uh, nice aesthetic down towards five twenty nine and introducing that area to um, Jersey Village is I, I think that's gonna be a, a big plus for us, so. With that, any other questions, discussions?
Yeah, Andrew, real quick, Austin, what, what happens if the development uh, doesn't go through or never stalls for some reason that we can't foresee and doesn't complete and, and you know, what's, what's our cost on that annexation besides what we've already mentioned?
Yeah, so if the uh, development doesn't go through, I mean, that kind of stops everything. You know, the annexation would stop the, we wouldn't be putting the water and sewer over there, so. Really, it's gotta have, you know, groundbreaking and, and construction going on before we're expanding services and really getting.
All right. Any other questions, discussion? If not, looking for a motion?
I'll move, we approve twenty twenty one dash oh seven.
A second.
All right, a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. All right, let me listen to mayor and council comments. Um, I'm gonna start with uh, Drew Lawson.
Thanks, Mayor Mitchum. Uh, wanna salute uh, Employee of the Month Sonia Smith. Thank you for, for your efforts uh, continuing. It's a great honor. And uh, a happy new year, everyone.
Thank you, Drew. Uh, Bobby?
Just wishing everyone a happy new year.
Thanks, sir. Uh, Gary?
Yeah, I'll go with the happy new year thing. Uh, also, I, I saw in the consent agenda, we're, we're continuing the what is, what's it called? The disaster um, declaration? Uh, I just wanna reiterate how important it is to follow the CDC guidelines. The virus is just getting, I mean, it's going through the mutations, which is very typical of a virus. And there's nothing that says that it couldn't mutate into a form that's much more deadlier than what we have. We've been very lucky with this virus. And I just, I can't understand people not getting a vaccination. I, and I certainly don't understand people not wearing a mask. It's such a simple thing to ask of people and I, I just, I, I'm asking right now for anybody that's not wanting to do that to reconsider. And please think about other people. That's all I got.
Thank you, Gary. Greg?
Um, just like to, to recognize the Jersey Village Senior Outreach. Uh, it's, it's amazing the work that they're doing and the updates are fantastic and, and what a, what a, a great resource for Jersey Village. And just like to commend the, the founders and the volunteers for starting a project and, and escalating it the way it has. A lot of times projects start and they kinda die off. But this is one that appears just to be growing and growing and very commendable work and commendable efforts uh, from all of them. So I'd just like to recognize them for their efforts.
Thank you, Greg. Uh, James, last word?
Um, I would echo, congrats to Sonia Smith. Um, I worked with her. She's a fantastic dedicated employee. Very happy to see her recognized. I agree. Hearing from Joe Hewitt with J V S O is one of my favorite things on council each year and her coming to talk. And I did not know they worked so hard for getting people the vaccine. Um, that is fantastic to hear. It's, it's coming. I know a lot of people have been working very hard to find a way to get the vaccine. There's large shipments coming to Houston. It's, it's coming soon. Um, I hear what Gary says. It's really frustrating to see the large subsection of even public service deciding not to get it, which just do your research and I'm not gonna tell you how to think and what, what. I've got my opinion, you got yours. Just do your research, so. Um, went by Farmer's Market this, yes, uh, yesterday and just remind everybody, it happens twice a month now. It's really awesome. Josh has done some great things. He just got his certified Parks Professional, which is quite an accomplishment too, so. That's all I have.
Hey, James. Um, I just wanna also congratulate Sonia for uh, Employee of the Month. I've always heard fantastic things about uh, her hard work and uh, hopefully uh, she, she uh, feels as special as, as we uh, appreciate everything that she does. Um, agree, J V S O, just incredible. Um, you know, I remember when that organization was founded um, few years ago and the way that it has grown or organically. Um, they are just the nicest human beings on the planet. And uh, being a member of their Facebook group, seeing the work that the volunteers have done, uh, specifically Carrie Lawrence and finding every possible sign up that she could find for vaccinations for people to, to sign up. Um, I also wanna recognize uh, my neighbor Ca- Ca- Kathy Hubner. Uh, she made a post in a, a, one of our, our Facebook groups uh, uh, highlighting um, the sign up for Methodist uh, hospital and, and I know dozens of our citizens were able to sign.
Memorial Herman.
Memorial Herman, sorry. It was an M. Uh, all the great, great uh, organizations out there, but she, she, she did a great job in posting that sign up. I know dozens of people uh, were able to get on that list. Um, and that thing, it seems like every list seems to just fill up immediately, so keep trying and thank you to everybody who keeps posting uh, to get our citizens as healthy as possible. You guys are literally saving lives. Uh, every person gets a vaccination. Um, these vaccinations are effective, effective up to ninety five percent, some peo, sometimes even higher than that. Um, if you do your research. Um, so these are literally saving lives. Um, I wanna also say thank you to the Parks and Recreation Department. Um, I noticed that there's some flyers around about Valentine's Day uh, for a couple of local businesses that uh, are participating um, in a take home dinner slash paint uh, class. Uh, that sounds, that's just a really genius way during a pandemic to still celebrate the holiday, still support local business and uh, still have a great time for the holiday. So cheers to you guys for doing that. It's really, really great. I'm looking forward to all the great things that are gonna hopefully happen uh, spring and summertime uh, after we get through this. Um, I participated in a couple of conference calls uh, with the state, state level government uh, on vaccines. Um, there's some very good news. Tex- Texas is very efficient at putting needles in arms and uh, Operation Warp Speed actually changed their, the way they're distributing vaccines to states uh, based on their efficiency. And so Texas being one of the more efficient states, um, we're really looking forward to getting more and more shipments of the vaccine. Um, and I know Austin, you're, you uh, and your staff are working to uh, try to get something happening in Jersey Villas, but again, this is just this is early, early days of the vaccine coming out. It is a extremely hot commodity. And uh, everybody needs it, everybody wants it, so we, we just uh, need to continue seeing where it's gonna be available. In the meantime, there is a very great way to uh, prevent the, the virus from going around. Wear a mask. It's very, very easy. I run a business where we interact with hundreds of people a day. No one on my staff has tested positive for COVID while they've been working at, at my, my place of business. It's because we are very, very strict about mask wearing. It's not hard to do. It's extremely easy. And you don't even have to wear it the entire time you're in a business. In a restaurant, you wear it while you're ordering. You have a seat, that's it. Three minutes of wearing a mask can save someone a lifetime of grief and pain. It is extremely easy. Whether, where your opinions come from, I don't care. It is about kindness. It is about being kind to the people who are working to make your life better. Please, please, please simply wear a mask. It's that easy. We're about to get through this. There is light at the end of the tunnel. You live in a state that's very efficient and we're going to get more vaccines and, and trust me, as the business owner, many business owners, we cannot wait for this to be over with. And just wear a mask when you're interacting with people you don't know. Very simple. And let's keep working towards getting everybody vaccinated. All right, with that, I'm gonna close it out and uh, we are going to move into executive session. I've got a script somewhere. There we go. Council is uh, now going to retire to close session at nine oh two PM. Pursuant Texas of Means Act in connection with the following items. Pursuant to the Texas of Meanings Act, section five five one dash zero eight seven, deliberation regarding economic development negotiations, section five five one dot zero seven two deliberations about real property and section five five one dot zero seven one consultations with attorney. A closed meeting to deliberate information from a business prospect that the city seeks to locate in Jersey Village turns number two in economic development negotiations, including the possible purchase, exchange or value of real property related thereto. We will return to open session and continue the remainder of tonight's agenda after the closed session deliberations are concluded. Thank you, everybody. We'll join the other Zoom meeting and uh, let's make sure we keep this one open so we can rejoin. Thank you, everybody. We'll join the other Zoom meeting and uh let's make sure we keep this one open so we can rejoin. Thank you, everybody. We'll join the other Zoom meeting and uh let's make sure we keep this one open so we can rejoin.
Are you ready?
The closed session was adjourned at 9:44 PM and no official action or vote was conducted during the closed session. And with that, we adjourn. Thanks everybody.
Alright. I'll take care.
See you next time.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.
Bye.